And I call this special May 6th meeting of the Alamo County School Board to order. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Because of the COVID restrictions, we have to read this into our minutes each time. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically, pressing it to Virginia State Law and the Alamo County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room, featured in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. Tonight, we don't have any public comment, but we could still have things being submitted to our website. All right, now introducing our board members. I'm Dr. Kate Acuff.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Mr. Daniel Alcaro.
John O'Alcaro at large, and I'd just like to wish happy Mother's Day a little bit early to all the mothers here in this meeting and all the mothers listening in.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcaro. Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
This is Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Mr. Dave Oberg.
Dave Oberg, Whitehall Magisterial District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Okay, Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. And I do not think I see a student rep here.
I was getting ready to message her.
Okay.
Could I have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Alcaro, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve tonight's agenda. Ms. Johnston, could you call the role for us on this motion, please?
Ms. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Oberg.
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, we talked earlier about the video that had been prepared or is either being prepared for some of us earlier. Tonight, we'll have a special screening of the video. Dr. Haas is going to introduce it to us. So, Dr. Haas.
Thank you, Chair Page. We thought it would be really nice tonight, since we do have a special meeting, and this week it was National Principal Appreciation Day and then also National Teacher Appreciation Day. We have a couple of videos. Each one's about five minutes, so we thought the board might enjoy it and then also the viewing public might enjoy these videos. So, thank you, Jennifer, for queuing up the videos.
It is National Principal Appreciation Day, and we thought it would be a great idea to put together a video to let all of our Alamo County Schools principals know just how important you are to us and how much we appreciate you. I want to say to all of our principals, on behalf of our school community, just how important you are and the work that you do is outstanding. Whether you are having an impact on your whole school community or working with just one individual child to get things right for that child and his or her family, you are doing outstanding work and we really appreciate it. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much for everything you're doing for our kids and for our staff. This has been the most challenging year probably in our life, and you guys have come through it with just absolute, absolute honor and have just done an exceptional job.
I'd like to thank all the principals for their leadership and empathy and humanity guiding us through the past year and trying to make this new version of schooling as productive and happy as possible.
First and foremost, thank you to each and every single principal. I know education is the foundation of absolutely everything, and I cannot be more thankful for everything that you guys are doing, especially during these times, and accommodating and helping each and every kid to reach their dreams and their successes. And it's the teamwork and your support means absolutely everything to us, and we cannot be more thankful. Thank you.
Unprecedented year of chaos. Our principals have been the face of the school. They've kept us calm. They've kept us organized. They've kept us safe through this pandemic. And for that, I'm incredibly grateful. Can't ask for two better administrators than the two we have this year.
They definitely do a lot for the school. They're the main person that you go to if you have any issues in the school. I know for my principal here, he is very very out there with students, very willing to welcome every student. I remember I came to him with a project idea that I had my junior year, and he was so willing to help and put any effort into getting my project started. So, I believe that all principals, they're just the most open person that you can go to, and if you definitely have any issue, reach out to your principal because they can make such a huge impact.
The thing about our principals I like the best is that they're easy to talk to.
Everything that they have done has been appreciated because they also had to make, or the principals had to make, changes within very short amounts of time and things that we have never had to go through before. This pandemic wouldn't have been something that we had experience in. So, just the changes that they had to make, the way that they adapted to all of those things, we really appreciate all of those things from our principals.
We need help with anything to know that you guys have always been there to be there, to help us through different environments and different changes throughout the year. So, thank you.
Just want to take the time to say thank you for all you're doing and thank you for just continuing to bring everyone together and the hard work and effort you're putting towards the school systems and towards us.
Thank you for everything you're doing. This has been a logistical, let me use not the word nightmare, logistical hurdle that you guys have left over beautifully. The changes that you've had to accommodate, the scheduling, the just logistics of schools and COVID precautions has been honestly kind of mind-boggling, and you guys have navigated it all. And thank you. That's hard work. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the Alamo County School Board and our Alamo County Public Schools community, thank you very much.
Well done.
Okay. Very beautiful. Very well done.
I think Jennifer's queuing up the one for teacher one.
Yep, we have one more.
It is National Teacher Appreciation Day, and we thought it would be a good idea to show our appreciation for all of our teachers in Alamo County Public Schools by putting together a video. And so, I want to say thank you to all of our teachers for the outstanding work you do. Whether you are working with your whole school community, side by side with your colleagues, working with your class, your students and your families, or going that extra effort to help every student be as successful as the student can be, I really want to tell you, you do top-notch work. You make a positive difference every day, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
I just have to say thank you so much for accepting all of the challenges and completely embodying our motto for this year, which is "Challenge Accepted." Not only have you guys embraced them, you've knocked it out of the water, and we're so very appreciative of all that you've done and that all that you continue to endure to make sure our students are as successful as possible. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your continued passion, your perseverance through this year, and just your general positivity. We appreciate you. We value you and are just so glad that you chose to become teachers.
Thank you. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for your whole career, but especially in this past year, since this is current teacher appreciation. This past year has been so incredibly difficult, and I've been able to experience it as a school board member and as a parent. And my kids, the way they light up when they interact with their teachers, it actually puts me to shame a little bit. I'm like, wow, they really enjoy these people. I should probably be friendlier to my children. But I would say thank you. I appreciate it, the work you're doing. I know it's hard work, and I would encourage them, as a former teacher myself, to take time for yourself, to take care of yourself because it's a difficult time for all of us, and I hope they know that they're appreciated.
To all the teachers, especially this year, I know that is probably very tough just teaching in this new environment, being on Zoom, having to deal with the technical difficulties. But teachers are such a huge impact in a student's life. I know for me, I've had teachers who are not only there just to teach the material, but also to get to know me as a student, get to know what I'm interested in, just asking me how my day was. Those go a long way besides just teaching the material itself, reaching out there to your students, just checking up on them, and then maybe getting through the material a little later. I know that that's such a huge impact that teachers make.
Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you all for your flexibility, your love, your creativity, your patience, and most of all, your dedication to our students. We are so lucky to have you here. Thank you.
They may not really realize it, but we really appreciate everything that they have done since last March because we realized that they have been under a huge amount of pressure that when this first happened, within like two or three days, they had to come up with plans to go virtual. So, that was a tremendous burden. And then since then, at various times, they've had to make changes also that might have been pretty rapid because at times we had to change things within a very, very short amount of time. So, just the sacrifices that they have made have really been appreciated. And I don't think we do tell them that enough, but their sacrifice has been tremendously appreciated.
Thank you for organizing.
What would you say thank you to Ms. Page?
Thank you for being nice.
Thank you, teachers, for looking out for all of our students, including my own girls here. Thank you for working so hard every day to make sure kids are learning and having fun. And thanks for all you do.
I want to thank all the teachers for their patience and everything they have done over the last year to help me out to get this job done because I couldn't do it without them. Whether it was moving furniture around in the classroom, but I absolutely appreciate everything that you do each and every day by just coming to work with a smile on your face and making my day a little bit easier. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you every day.
I like how they teach me to do math and reading.
You guys are heroes. You're frontline heroes, and we can never repay you for everything you've done for our kids this year. Keep the faith, and I know it's been challenging, but we're going to come through this and we're going to come through stronger and better, and it's because of all the hard work that you're doing.
On behalf of the Alamo County School Board and our Alamo County Public Schools community, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dr. Haas. And I would like to express our appreciation also to Phil and the two videographers that worked on this. So, Matt, can you give us their name?
So, Lauren Hunt is our webpage designer, and then Patrick Huddleston is the new professional development videographer.
Okay, yeah.
And I think there's some Academy Award nominations for a couple of board members. It's got to be in the works.
Okay, we'll see. All right, next movement right along. Dr. McLaughlin is now going to take us through our main presentation for this evening, operational plan for 2021-2022. Dr. McLaughlin.
Yes, good evening, board members. Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division. And I'm here tonight to share our recommended operational plan for the 2021-2022 school year. Oops, sorry, I just went out of present mode. Let's get that back up. All right, apologies there, but let me start that over. Good evening, board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division, and I'm here tonight to share with you our recommended operational plan for the 2021-2022 school year. We'll go through a number of highlights with you, and we'll have time to take questions at the conclusion of the presentation. As you listen to tonight's presentation, please keep in mind that our request for the board will be for you to take action on this recommendation at your meeting next week on May 13th. If there's any questions or requests for information that we can't provide tonight, we'll do our best to have that for you on the 13th. So, let's get started. Ever since our schools closed on March 13th, 2020, our goal has been to get all of our students and staff back for five days a week for full-time, in-person instruction. This year, we've taken steps toward that goal, moving through multiple stages of our reopening plan over the past several months. We know that most students and families want to get back to in-person learning as soon as it is safe to do so, and we've also discovered during our time in online and hybrid learning that some students and families prefer an online learning experience. This sentiment was reinforced recently when we received the results of our 2021-2022 preference survey. We had nearly 7,000 responses to our survey last month, and as you can see, around 90% of our families hope to return next year for five days of full-time instruction, while around 8% wish to remain virtual. With that information in mind, our initial plan was to come to the board tonight with the recommendation that we move to full-time, in-person instruction next year while also providing a virtual option for families who preferred to learn that way. Recently, however, Senate Bill 1303 was signed into law to take effect on July 1st. The new law requires Virginia school districts to provide five days per week of instruction to all students. With this in mind, Dr. Haas announced that our position on the 2021-2022 school year would be to have five days of in-person instruction. We then modified our plans for this meeting and tonight present you with our recommended operational plan for next year. As alluded to earlier, we've been working on this plan for quite some time, and it's been guided by research and best practice at the local, state, and national level. Resources that we used in the development of our operational plan include guidance from the Virginia Department of Education, and they also recently launched a new site, the Virginia Learn Site, about engaging, assessing, recovering, and nurturing students as they come back. As you well know, we've had a lot of guidance from the Virginia Department of Health that we keep you informed with, with our COVID update at most board meetings. We also have research partners with the Educational Advisory Board and also have been using research from the McKinsey Group and Hanover Research. And you may not know that Albemarle recently spearheaded a state-level pandemic recovery PLC in collaboration with the Educational Advisory Board that brought together divisions from across the state to share best practices and ideas for moving forward. In addition to this, Dr. Haas meets weekly with the Region 5 superintendents, and every other week, he attends a meeting with the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. We also have a local partnership of both public and private school leaders, the Blue Ridge Health Department, and local pediatricians who are advising us, our in-house learning recovery team, and our own School Health Advisory Board, who are all providing input into this plan. One of the key pieces of information that we considered as we developed the plan was the number of students who would be returning to our schools and the number who would select a virtual option. When we conduct surveys such as this, we're also, we're interested in who we are hearing from, knowing that some of our minority populations are often underrepresented in the responses that we receive. And as you can see here, that remains a problem for us. Our Black and Hispanic communities are represented at about half the rate we would expect based on the demographic makeup of Albemarle County Public Schools. I feel it's important to note that after the initial distribution of this survey via email, we saw the disparity of responses was even more stark with our Black and Hispanic families representing only 2% to 3% of our responses. So, seeing that, we took some deliberate actions such as sending information via text message instead of email and asking our principals to reach out to families directly. So, while our rate is still not where we'd like it to be, we have been taking steps to get more evenly distributed representation. Additionally, we're interested in looking at the breakdown of our respondents to see if any groups were requesting virtual learning at a higher rate than others. And as you can see here, most of our membership groups responded at similar rates, between about 6% and 10% indicated they had a preference for virtual learning. Our Black families, however, responded at a rate more than double the average when selecting virtual learning for next year. So, this led us to ask why that was happening. As part of the survey, we asked our current families who were remaining virtual to identify the primary factor in their decision not to come in for in-person instruction. The response that was most common was that they felt virtual learning provided the safest learning option for their child or for their family. Around 50% of respondents identified that as the primary reason. But when you break that down into our different membership groups, however, you see a significantly higher rate for our Asian, Black, and multirace families. And upon seeing these results, Dr. Hairston began some personal outreach to some of our families to connect and discuss their concerns. He was able to discern that while the reasons were really nuanced for each family, the common thread of his conversation was fear of children or other family members becoming sick by returning to school. So, with this in mind, schools are already connecting with families to see how we might support them, to feel more safe about coming back to the school, and will continue this work through the start of our next school year. In addition to our family surveys, we also sought feedback from our instructional staff. When we asked them about how we're doing with our mitigation strategies, they responded pretty much across the board that we were doing well. We had a five-point Likert scale, and the consistent and correct use of masks, hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette, and cleaning and disinfection were all well into the 90s. The one place we did see a little disparity there was with social distancing. And I think that was something we expected. We've got kids who haven't seen each other for quite some time. When they get back, they want to be with their friends. But even with that challenge, we're still having an 83% positive response rate to that. We also asked about silver linings of the pandemic that teachers would like to see continue into next year. And we see that some of the top silver linings they identified, including improved air quality in our classrooms, such as our HEPA filtration, dedicated time for PLC, which the board supported with the changes we made to our division calendar recently, allowing online staff meetings and online parent meetings, and having common division pacing guides. So, we feel like we have established practices that provide a safe learning environment for our students, and we have some ideas of how we can make our in-person experience even stronger as we move forward, which leads us to the question of what our instruction next year will look like. So, in-person instruction will be in-person, five days a week, for any student who chooses to come back. We will follow all of the SOQ staffing guidelines. So, we'll have fully staffed positions for our specialists, for our school media centers, and other SOQ positions. Our secondary schools will return to an A-B schedule. You may recall that this year, we moved to a four-by-four because of the pandemic. And at our elementary schools, all specials will be back. Being taught by special teachers and interventions, we'll be back again with appropriate mitigation strategies. And at all of our schools, we'll see our extracurricular activities return with mitigation strategies. Our virtual school will look a bit different. We are launching a one-year pilot program for our virtual school next year. And virtual school will also be five days a week. Our hours are anticipated to be from 8:30 to 3:30 each day. And we're going to ask students who sign up for the virtual school to make a commitment for each semester. One of the things that we had a concern about is what would happen if significant numbers of students who chose the virtual school chose to come back to in-person instruction? So, we felt the semester made sense. The virtual school will be staffed, just like our other school, in terms of staffing ratios. And we've built out and launched, actually launched publicly this evening, our virtual campus website, which has some more detailed information about what the virtual school will look like next year. We're planning to hire about 40 teachers and a principal for the virtual school and have that process underway already. Expectations at the virtual school next year will look a little bit different than our current virtual instruction. Virtual school will have attendance required for synchronous instruction. When the school day starts at 8:30, there'll be a first period that students are going to, and we'll expect them to be there at that time. We'll also expect them to be active participants. And when we say active participants, we mean things like having your camera on and participating in chats when asked, and participating in breakout rooms and things like that. All students at the virtual schools will still have a connection to their home-based school and will be able to participate in any extracurricular activities they like, dances, clubs, sporting activities. And students in the virtual school will get their supports, such as school counseling, from their home school. In terms of staffing, for our in-person instruction, we will expect all staff who are teaching in person to be in the schools in person. It's not going to be a combination of in-person and virtual instruction for those students. And as I said earlier, we are currently in the process of hiring a principal for the virtual school, and will soon thereafter begin staffing that school. We don't feel like we'll have a shortage of applicants for that. When we asked our teachers if they would be interested in working at the virtual school, we had nearly 250 respondents say that would be something they would like to be considered for next year. And so, of course, we'll still need mitigation strategies, and these will all be influenced by the current CDC guidance that we have. But in general, we'll see mask and face coverings continue. We'll keep our improved ventilation practices in all of our schools as well as enhanced cleaning and disinfection protocols and a focus on hand hygiene. If we do have cases in the school, we'll work with the Blue Ridge Health Department to conduct contact tracing, and if they feel that quarantine or isolation is needed, we will follow their guidance on that. Social distancing will look a bit different in our schools next year because we're going to shift to the updated CDC guidance of three feet of social distancing in our classrooms. Now, there are some exceptions to that. For example, when students are eating, the recommendation is six feet, and when physical activity is taking place, the recommendation is 10 feet. And so, we will have greater social distancing under those circumstances. In social distancing, when we have three feet of social distancing in our classrooms, that's going to have an impact on staffing and on spacing and on the space that's available for our students. We have conducted a study to determine how many students each of our classrooms at our schools can hold with three feet of social distancing. And when we compare that to our anticipated numbers for return, we do have four schools where we're going to need some extra space, and those are Albemarle High School, Western Albemarle High School, Monticello High School, and Henley Middle School. And planning is underway to install an eight-classroom modular unit at each one of those schools. Those modular units will all have the same air purifiers that our regular classrooms will. And as we're doing that, we're also analyzing the staffing impact that reducing class sizes will have at all levels and determining what we need to do to make sure our schools are adequately staffed for three feet of social distancing. In terms of transportation for next year, this summer, we are installing HEPA filtration units on all of our school buses, and this will allow us by the start of next year to bring capacity on buses back to our pre-pandemic levels. We will still be encouraging parents to transport their students if they have the ability to do that in the morning, in the afternoon. But busing, transportation should not be a barrier to us opening our schools five days a week next year. And of course, we always are planning for what would happen should we see COVID cases increase in the area. So, if we do need to transition out of in-person instruction, we would transition to a fully virtual model, not a hybrid like we are in right now. We are hoping that if we have to make that decision, we could make it on a school-by-school basis. You know, if... You know, if one school has an elevated level of COVID that we see there, then we might just close that school until it's safe for those students to return. Of course, we would always follow the guidance that's given to us by the Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Health and the Blue Ridge Health District around that. And if we needed to do something on a larger scale because of local conditions, we would certainly follow that advice. Student meals are still a little bit up in the air. We had a meeting that was scheduled with the Department of Ed today, this afternoon. Just found out a few hours ago that got bumped to next Thursday. So hopefully by the time we come back next Thursday, we'll have some more definitive news for you. But we are optimistic that we will have, that there's a USDA waiver that will be extended through June of 2022 that will allow us to continue to provide free breakfast and free lunch for our students. Again, we're not 100% certain on that yet, but hope to find, have that answer very soon. We're still determining the logistics of how we'll get that food to students and where they will eat it. But we'll have that up and running by the time we get back into school. And so you heard a lot of things in those last few slides that are going to have a financial impact on the school division. Some major new expenses that we have include the purchase and the setup of those mobile classrooms at our high schools and at Henley, additional staffing that we need because of our three feet of social distancing, the HEPA filtration that is going to be installed on all of our buses, and the staffing for the virtual school. We are anticipating, however, that federal stimulus funding is going to cover all of those one-time expenses. So we don't think this is going to have an impact on our general operational budget. And so when we think about next steps, we are going to launch this month some virtual school information sessions. And also, beginning in the next couple of weeks, we will have informational forums at each school hosted by the principals to talk a little bit about what instruction will look like next year in person at their schools and to also to provide some information on options for the virtual school. We're going to have updated websites for both in-person and virtual learning. And on June 1st, we'll distribute our intent forms for next year. We'll have those available to families until June 11th. And our principals will be working to get 100% response rate. We really are expecting that we get in touch with every single family prior to the start of next year to make sure they're, we know their wishes for next year. And then finally, we'll hit August 23rd, which I think is a day we've been waiting for, for a long, long time, when we're anticipating all of our students walking back into our schools for five days of in-person instruction. Not quite back to normal, but a whole lot closer than we've been for a long time there. So again, here's just a reminder of all of the different resources that we consulted as we developed this plan. And we are happy to take questions from board members tonight with the hope that when we come together next week, we can have a board vote on whether or not to adopt this recommended operational plan. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for any questions.
Dr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Given what appears to be a difference in the demographics of those who are wanting to enroll in virtual, how are we going to monitor differences in performance of virtual? Well, no matter who goes to virtual, if there's a big difference in performance, how are we going to monitor that and what are our intervention strategies going forward with that?
So I might tap Ms. Collins for that answer.
Hello. Good evening. Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. We would monitor virtual students as we do as the students in the building. We have progress monitoring systems set up. So those students, if they were in an intervention, then they would have that system set up behind them and for them. They will have intervention, they will have special education. All the programs and opportunities we have in-person would be provided in the virtual setting.
One question that I've heard frequently is will the virtual students be at the same, learning at the same rate? Meaning will the classes coordinate on a daily basis so that everybody's getting taught the same information?
We would anticipate and expect that the pacing of the classes and the standards of those classes would be the same, whether you're virtual or in the building.
So this is basically that question, but in a different way. So then, are the pacing guides at this point division-wide for each? Okay, great, great. Awesome. And to follow up the other question that Kate asked, so would ESOL students be able to choose virtual if that's what they wanted?
Absolutely. And they would have their supports from their home school because they have those relationships already with those teachers, many of our students. So we would want to keep those intact so that if they were moving back into a building at any point, they wouldn't be having to change a lot of the teachers. We're very cognizant of all those shifts that we did this year and wanted to eliminate that as much as possible.
Dr. Collins, what? I'm sorry.
That's okay. So for next year also and moving forward, are we maintaining the same counseling staff? Or are we going to increase that number, given all this trauma?
Dr. Haas, we did not add any additional counseling staffing per school. We did add the mental health coordinator at the central office. So we feel like that's going to be able to help us help coordinate all the guidance counselors to better meet those needs of students in the buildings and in virtual land.
We're good. We have enough counselors. And we used grant funding that we had from a private donor to hire the counseling director. We'll be expanding services by increasing efficiency, coordination, all the things that we've sort of been lacking in the last 12 years since the first recession when we lost our counseling director. And different people like me over the years have been filling in as the counseling director. But we have, we exceed Virginia's standards for school counseling, mental health counseling, all of that. So we'll be in good shape with that.
I don't know who to address this to, so I'll just address it to the whole and whoever can answer, answer it. If the number of high school students who are coming virtual is what it looks like, how are we going to provide specialized classes? If there's one or two people who are taking it?
Actually, Mr. Thomas is on the, in the meeting. I'll call on him. He's been running our steering team and looking at these kinds of questions. So I know that they've recently talked about how we might think about one or two students that want to take this one course. So, Mr. Thomas, would you give us some information around that?
Absolutely. Jay Thomas, Director of Secondary Education. Mr. Oberg, what we would do is, as Patrick alluded to earlier, we're in the process of hiring a virtual principal. I'm actually started setting up interviews for our virtual teachers as well. Once the kids between June 1st and June 11th start to lock in that they want to come to the virtual school, we'll be able to pull their schedules they built in the base school and see exactly what that looks like and what classes we may need to be creative with. There might be some classes we're not able to offer as far as especially. But we did put on the website that's under construction that we would be able to use maybe a program like Virtual Virginia if it's a few kids who need to take a class, they need to offer to stay on track for graduation, to stay involved in a program that they're in at the base school that they're not going to face-to-face. So we're looking at multiple options and ways to try to figure that out. But the key is getting those kids' schedules and kind of putting it together first and seeing what their choices are and what their alternatives are and trying to build that out and keep them on track for graduation.
Mr. Thomas, will you also talk a little bit about some of the technology we're trying to put in each of the high schools to make this perhaps more viable?
Yeah, so we actually just met with the Department of Technology and a bunch of folks today trying to figure out what are the best pieces of technology maybe to outfit a room or two at each school so that we can satellite classes back and forth between folks. You know, in addition to being able to connect with kids virtually if the need arises that way as well.
In long term, I think this has been something we've been working on and trying to think about doing for a long time. So this allows us to think about how this pilot of a virtual academy or virtual school helps us in long-term solving some of the offerings that the students want from one school that's not offered in another.
I have a couple of questions involving the virtual program. First of all, I have to think that with 8% of the students projected to be in that, that comes in at around 1,000 to 1,100 or 1,200 kids. It's going to be an enormous job for a principal to be juggling all of the different programs, all of the different projects at three different levels, whether it's high school, whether it's middle school, or whether it's elementary school. And I think it's going to be an enormous job. And I'm sure you're going to hire the person who can do that. The question I have is, will there be some flexibility in the virtual schools at different levels, for an example? I don't see it as being as necessary in elementary and middle, but it could very well be. But once you get into high school, when you have some students who are in the workforce, if there are some students who are doing other projects, will there be, will the classes be recorded so that people who are, I'm just going to use the work example, working in the morning can pick up the school work in the afternoon? So as they're not sitting in the classes from 9:00 to 4:00 every day? Will there be that kind of flexibility or people want to go back over the weekend and review some classes?
So the way I would answer that is that there's a lot of flexibility already in the brick and mortar schools that when seniors sign up, juniors and seniors sign up for classes now, they're, they can take two release periods where if they stack them up, if they are going out for an internship or if they are, they're just working because they choose to, that they're able to do that. We are, you know, when you're looking at a virtual school that's really just going to strictly be a virtual school, we are planning on having state-of-the-art. I think, you know, Graham summed it up in his message earlier for principal and teacher appreciation. We really had to stand up a virtual school rapidly and our teachers have done an outstanding job. But there's many things we can do in the planning of our own virtual program that are going to allow us to do the things that you talked about, Jono. Things like recording so that students can come back to the information later. I mean, that's one of the best things about digital education is that students can just repeat the lesson if they choose to, if they want to hear it one more time. We're going to have all those features that are going to make for a great virtual experience. Students will have access to Virtual Virginia just like they do now. I don't think that's the best option for students because it's completely asynchronous and students just cycle through a curriculum. But if it's necessary for a young person to use something like that to repeat a class or if it's such a rare class that we wouldn't have the capacity to offer it, it is an option for them to do it and students with those kinds of needs do it now. We have a platform called Edu, Edgenuity that we use, which is also an asynchronous program that's used at the school level for credit recovery and also for students to work with a learning coach to get through the curriculum. So there's a full spectrum that we currently offer in brick and mortar schools that allow for that flexibility. When students sign up for the virtual school, the key difference is that it is just, it is going to be remote learning. So if you imagine the brick and mortar school experience and you transfer it to a digital platform, remote, it will be that experience. So we expect the same flexibility. Understanding that it could be a large number of students in this first year, we're going to monitor and adjust in terms of administrative supervision. However, just keep in mind all the trade-offs of things that the principal will not be doing, that brick and mortar principals do, like high school principals going out to football games, basketball games every night, you know, standing in the cafeteria for lunch duty, all those various supervision issues that they don't have to do, coordinate transportation, all the things that assistant principals work with out in the schools. So it'll be a trade-off. I'm going to say though, we want to, everyone should beware that there are trade-offs in life, that if you're choosing to attend a virtual program, there may be some things, some things that you might just have to give up. You may not have absolutely every single elective option that a student in the brick and mortar school might be provided. It just might not be there, but you will have the choice of attending a virtual school if that's what you want to do, which in and of itself is quite a thing that we could offer in our school system, especially with our own dynamic and excellent teachers teaching it.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Excuse my dog. I'll come back to the question.
Well, while Jana is getting ready to speak, I guess perhaps, Matt, Dr. Haas, you mentioned brick and mortar a lot of times and I'm on the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. By my calculation, we already have something like 30 trailers where students are taking classes and we're now talking about, and I understand the need for greater space, adding 36 more classrooms. And we're doing that unlike the nine-trailer, eight-classroom Learning Cottage behind Albemarle High School. We leased six years ago now. We're talking about purchasing these other facilities. My concern is, well, I would love to see the economics of that. The leasing of the Albemarle Learning Cottage was about 800,000 over five years, as I recall. I don't know what the difference in the purchase price is. And my concern is, if you have a lot of trailers, you're going to use them instead of really focusing on building our infrastructure. So I would just love to see some numbers on why the plan, proposed plan is to purchase all of those trailers. Hi, Rosalyn, Mishmet. I know we need them now and we may need them for a little while, but that much capacity in trailers has me quite concerned.
So to answer, Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer, to answer the lease versus purchase, we did do that analysis and there was no significant cost savings by just leasing. The cost to lease over the cost over the five years equated to the purchase cost that we could negotiate upfront. So we feel like it's a good use of some one-time monies that we will need immediately, but we likely would have needed in the next five years anyways. They're all at growth locations, Henley, Western, Albemarle. That you're correct, they are not long-term solutions. We do want our students in brick and mortar buildings. That being said, our experience with these particular modular units that we have purchased are, they are good quality. They're nice new spaces. So we've had a positive experience with them to date, the ones we have. But it is not our commitment that this would be a long-term capacity solution.
We would just have a lot of inventory after, say, two years from now. We would have what we have Mount Run, we've got Brownsville, we've got Baker Butler.
There's nothing that says we can't sell them, right? If they belong to us.
That's a good question, Dave. I like, yeah.
Yeah, and I will also add, within the next two years, the Brownsville trailers will be removed with the opening of the Croze Edition. We're going to remove the Scottsville trailers within a year. And so we are in the process of removing them in other locations as well.
One issue that goes with that question is security. And in terms of keeping, especially when students are going outside of the building to go to the other units, security. How is, what are you all thinking about that?
We are actually working through that logistics. We do it a little differently at each school, so we're analyzing kind of the best path forward. But it is, the idea is that you would maintain. But it is, the idea is that you would maintain locks on both the trailer side and the school side and then develop a solution like likely an electronic card system that day-to-day operations is not impacted by that security. And we're working through it.
The other question that I had before my dog jumped into it was, I know Dr. McLaughlin was talking about sending out the questionnaire for virtual or in-person on the first of June with the response time of the 11th. And I know that there will be principals calling those who haven't, and other staff, calling those who haven't returned it. What do you think of in terms of an absolute drop dead date where people could change from virtual to in-person before opening?
So I do know, one of the things that we've got going for us is our principals have done this work a couple of times already this year with intent forms. So they, I'm guessing have a system down and know some of the families they'll need to do some direct reach out to. In terms of a date when we would no longer accept a switch from virtual to in-person or vice versa, I don't think we've established that yet, but that'll be something we will need to consider.
I'm sorry, Katrina, go.
Kate, I will go just because it's a follow-up to Jana's. I kind of had a question. Have you done thinking around the sustainability of that seven point six percent or whatever that said they want to do virtual? Did they provide the reasoning for that? Because my fear is that, you know, every month, more and more people are getting vaccinated, more and more people are getting comfortable. So like maybe, I don't know, but have they indicated reasons? Like I like virtual because this works for my student and I want it to continue. Or I'm worried about COVID, but my child could have a vaccine in three months and I might want to go back to in-person.
Right. So we, so we did see, we asked our current virtual students why they chose virtual. So we have that information, but we did not ask that for the preference for next year. And we do know things are changing all the time with vaccines and those types of things. That's why one of the, one of the things that we feel is important is to set parameters on switching the schools next year. And where we're landing initially there is after one semester, if students want to move from the virtual school back to their brick and mortar school, that's when we would have that option.
So yeah, just making that clear to parents that this is a deadline.
Yep, I think in both our principal-led meetings and our meetings on the virtual school, there's going to be some really key pieces of information to get out to them. That would be one of them.
It's all, Kate.
Dr. McLaughlin, where are we physically going to house forty teachers and the principal? For the virtual school?
I would defer to Ms. Collins or Mr. Thomas on that.
I can answer that since I'm already, we're planning on housing most of the infrastructure for the virtual school at Center One where the technology department is, since we have the space there. And the idea around having a virtual school is also that the teachers would be able to just teach from their, from their home. We may be hiring teachers that actually never moved to Albemarle County to be teachers. So they would be able to do it from a remote place.
Do we have the grade breakdown or could we have the grade breakdown of those who are choosing virtual? At the next meeting?
I don't, I don't have that at my fingertips, but we could certainly get that, just a K through twelve numbers.
Thank you.
This has been sort of touched on before, but I know we have Virtual Virginia. But just for the parents or anybody who's listening, could you, somebody, the Dr. Haas or someone, explain why we are going in-house with our virtual program rather than relying on some state resource for that?
We opted for trying it remote because this is, it's low risk for us to do that. It's, we're going to be using one-time money to pilot it. So as we make our way through the year, if we realize that it's not like, I think Ms. Carlson talked about sustainability, quality, we'll be evaluating the school the way we do our other schools to see how things turn out in terms of results. If we don't want to continue to do that, then we, it's really a once in a decade, quarter century opportunity to get something started using federal dollars that if it doesn't work out, that we could back out of it. So having said that, we wanted to try to do something innovative and really special for our community that would be in demand perhaps for the long term. And to do that, we feel like our teachers are the best teachers we could offer our students. And I'm really pleased that two hundred and fifty of our teachers have indicated that they may apply for a job because we have outstanding teachers and many of them have gotten really good at using technology for virtual teaching and learning. The reason why we didn't look at tools like Virtual Virginia is because it is an asynchronous program. It's not live teaching and learning, students building relationships throughout the day or in the classroom setting, the virtual classroom setting with students. It is anytime, anyplace. And here's a couple of half-hour slots per week for office hours, maybe to email back and forth or chat with the teacher. So it's a good, it's a good way to solve like a real scarcity problem. If a student, for example, wants to take AP French and that's really the only option that they have, or maybe they're becoming a professional tennis player and they are enrolled in our schools, but they just cannot attend school. We've used that in the past. But I really feel that this is just the one, kind of a one-time silver lining that we would have the resources to be able to do it. It will help us alleviate capacity issues at the schools that we may not completely solve with portable classrooms. And so it's a, it's a low-risk, perhaps high-yield venture. And if it is sustainable and we're able to continue to do it for the future, if perhaps three to five or maybe seven percent of our students really benefit from the virtual teaching and learning environment, not because they, it's not safe for them or not safe for their families for them to attend school in person, but because it's a choice they're making or perhaps it's a choice for part of their day and then maybe they want to attend PVCC or attend a class at one of the brick and mortar high schools at another time of the day, then it would just be part of our portfolio with high-quality teachers.
Dr. Haas, is there a state protocol for accrediting all virtual schools? Or how does, how do we, what is that metric, if there is one?
There's not, it's the same accreditation for regular schools because it's based on student results. So if, if we choose to have a virtual school that stands alone by itself, there's a process that we have to go through to have it like created and recognized with a school ID and all those things that go with it, if we venture down that path. We're still, it's not a decision we have to make right now. We're still debating whether it would be more of a center that students are attending, but their records go back to the homeschool, as we call it. Like for K-Tech, K-Tech's the center, students take classes there. But everything that is part of their record resides at the school and they're considered a student at that school. We can transition into having it be a school unto itself, but it would be accredited in the same way. If you look at the school quality profiles that the VDOE provides, provides information about how schools are accredited.
Other than the academic performance, do we have some measure of success defined? Like how, what will we think of as a success? How will we define success other than we know that kids did well?
Well, I mean, we still have all the same climate measures, attendance. You know, overall, the students are, one of the things we're putting in place for next year is as part of our school, our own internal school improvement planning is having essentially student satisfaction questions quarterly throughout the year, feedback from them, feedback from the teachers on how the program is going overall. So I think it would be the same things we're putting in place through school improvement internally that we have for our, for the brick and mortar schools.
But you'd also have, I mean, you're going to have a pretty clear indication a year from now if our numbers, more people decide to go virtual or if no one decides to go virtual. I mean, it's like, it's like any charter school, magnet school, anything. We can really judge the success, not only by how the people perform, but whether they like it.
Yeah, I do think the numbers will probably go down initially as we come out of the pandemic because there'll be a fair portion of students that want to attend it health, safety concerns, things like that. But I think as the word spreads that it's a viable option for children who the day-to-day, you know, we, I, all of us realize that there are many benefits for students to interact socially in school and that it's important for their development. But having said that, for many students, you know, it may not be the majority of students, but for many students, the day-to-day interactions at school are more taxing perhaps than the benefit they get from being present. But they can still have a great interaction with their peers, with their teachers, and they can still, you know, attend something special by being in a virtual school that they may not have if they, if they really started to not enjoy coming to school.
Dr. McLaughlin, in your presentation, you had survey results of teachers. Did we survey other staff?
We had our, the survey that we put out was primarily asking some instructional-based questions. And so that one was directed toward our instructional staff.
So I'm curious because, you know, I wonder if some of those, especially the mitigation questions, would be slightly different from within the classroom, you know, and what other staff see. And also I just would really like to know staff opinions about silver linings as well. So I think that, you know, we should ask everyone those questions and I'd like to hear the answers.
Are there any other questions for Dr. McLaughlin or other staff members?
No, but I would want to say, because I know that we all had a chance to digest this information and ask questions outside of this meeting. And so I'd want to encourage any parents that are listening in. I know a lot of parents have like tuned into this meeting to like understand what's going on next year. To please reach out if you have questions and to feel free to ask them and bring them up because there are, there are a lot of, there's a lot of information that they can gain that way.
What I would say too, Ms. Carlson, it's, I'm kind of disappointed because we only have twenty-four viewers tonight. I thought perhaps we would have more. It's kind of a hot topic, right? But people, people are busy. They've got things going on. I'm grateful to the twenty-four that are out there. Thank you for, for being with us tonight. A lot went into it. But I also want to add that we do have a webpage that's up and running. It's still a bit under construction, but there's a lot of information around the virtual school and we're transitioning to return to school for next year, moving, starting to move and migrate all the information that we have about return to school for this school year to that place. So, you know, if people have questions, please don't forget, there's a lot of great resources that we have online about it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas. Any other questions from the school board, board members? Okay, if not, remember if we have questions this week, we can forward them to either Dr. McLaughlin or Dr. Haas. And we will be voting on this at our next meeting, next Thursday, maybe thirteenth. So keep that in mind if there aren't any other questions now. Okay, if not, our next item on the agenda, other business. So is there any other business from either board members or Dr. Haas?
Well, this was a question that I posed earlier in the week. I was at a meeting with some community members and they brought up the question of commenting, of public comment and why we don't respond to public comment. And I really, I know that it's part of our policy, but I just didn't really have the answer to that. And so I just wanted our twenty-four viewers tonight or whoever wants to tune in or whoever's lost. You know, if we could just have a discussion of that and people's thoughts about that policy and like the history of it. And I know some people have already responded and I appreciate that, but I just wanted to have it in the forum.
We had this conversation several times over the past couple of years, trying to figure out how to do it. And the concern with having responses is that then it becomes, as opposed to us listening, us arguing. So, I mean, and it's just an invitation to that. We should, from my perspective, and I think that the members of the board who were there when we went through this last time, public comment is the opportunity for the public to comment. And so it's, if it becomes a discussion of back and forth, the reality is that, that we're up on a dais, right? If we're not on a computer, we're up in a dais and we have the authority and it's an invitation to, instead of listening, to respond. And, and I think it's, I think it's just, it's a healthier thing. If, if people have something they want to tell the board, they ought to be able to tell the board without having to be concerned that they're going to get shot down, that they're going to get poo-pooed, that they're going to get argued with. The board should spend that time, instead of formulating a response, hearing what they have to say. That's just my opinion.
I would agree with Mr. Oberk. I mean, as I responded to you in email, Ms. Lee, there's a lot of issues that are raised that the board has not had the opportunity to discuss. There's sometimes factual issues that we need to get more research about. Only, only Mr. Page speaks for the entire board and before the board has an opportunity to even discuss it, I think it would be premature to respond to each, you know, for a variety of things. We can have modified the procedures or the, the procedures where school board members may comment at the end of the meeting about something like, can we get more information about X, Y, or Z? And I think that's really more appropriate. I think particularly since we have added public comment to our working meetings, which we've not historically had until a couple of years ago, that it would really lengthen the meetings, which would be unfair to all the people that we've invited to be in the working meetings, students, teachers at all. So I think, I think if there are issues that we need to discuss, we can discuss them and schedule a discussion of them, you know, at a subsequent school board meeting. You're muted, Jono.
Sorry about that. I think the only thing I would add to that is that our primary role is doing the school division's business. And for town, town halls are a great time to go out or to go out to PTO meetings or, you know, to go out and make ourselves available for exactly that conversation because, you know, some of that conversation should absolutely be taking place. It's just as, as Mr. Oberk is saying, if somebody comes in with a particular topic they want to talk about that we're not, we're not prepared on yet because that's coming, you know, later in the month or at a different time. You know, we could be saying things that just aren't accurate and it's much easier to say in a town hall. I don't have that information, but I will get back to you and then you have to get back. So I would say town halls are better for, are better for, for, for this kind of conversation. And I'm all in support of doing town halls so that conversation can take place.
So I didn't have a chance to weigh in via email, but I would, I would say I like that we've expanded public comment to both sessions. I like that we've expanded signup. I always like hearing public comment. And I, when I read those rules, I've never taken, I actually think of the non-responding thing as like a reassurance to people who are giving comment that there's, this is the procedure, just so you know, like we are listening, but don't expect us to like have a response. a reassurance to people who are giving comment that there's, this is the procedure, just so you know, like we are listening, but don't expect us to like have a response for you, just that they feel comfortable because not everyone knows what the speaking is like. It can be a little weird to get, you know, your times up and then the next person. And I've never taken it as a prohibition against bringing it up in the other school that, we had this conversation. We talked about how at the end of the meeting, when we do that, that's like a perfect time for school board members, if they want to revisit or talk about a particular comment. So, um, I don't know if you had heard that part, but I would, um, just reiterate that that's a perfect time to bring up something. If you have something that you want to speak to that public comment, um, that public comment brought up. I myself don't always do it. Sometimes I want to bring up something and then I, that's into the meeting.
Any other input from board members? Because, Miss Lee, we have then heard two or three things that, um, either we already have in place so that we could think about instituting to make, what you were discussing better. But the comments at the end by our board members would be one way to address some of the issues. And like everybody is saying, it wouldn't be like a given, uh, back and forth conversation, but at least it would let the people know, uh, public know that we are listening. And then also town halls and PTO meetings. So, um, any other things, Ms. Carlson?
Um, did you see me go mute, unmute, mute, unmute? That was me like, do I want to speak? Do I not want to speak? Do I want to speak? Do I not want to speak? Another thing that we did that I think resonated with people and I, we don't need to bring it back, but just so that people know that we are paying attention was for a little period of time, we used to recap what the public comments said. So like, it was like read kind of into the, the notes, like we, um, like a one sentence, like this person spoke to this, this person spoke to that. So that, you know, we had it kind of listed and I actually kept like a log of all the, the things. So I, we don't need to, we can think about doing that again if people are feeling like they're not, um, being heard when they, they give their comments.
Yeah. I mean, I think, um, all of that makes sense. I think a, a big concern that I heard, uh, at this group was, well, you know, we have this thing that's important to us and we don't know that it's going to be addressed and we don't feel like, um, yeah, I mean, I think that's it. And, but I, I think that your points are really good that if we don't have the information on that yet, or we don't know, like I often don't know, okay, well, so where is my lane in this? I don't really know. Is this, would this truly be operational? Is this something that has some policy attached to it? I don't. So there's, there's always a lot of research that I feel like I want to do before I respond to really anything. So I, I think this is really helpful. So I appreciate all the feedback.
Okay. Thank you, Miss Lee. Any other, uh, business by other board members or about Dr. Haas?
I would just say that tomorrow is National School Cafeteria Workers' Day. So if you get a chance to thank your school cafeteria staff, please do, you know, an email is great, uh, cards, those kinds of things. And, uh, next week on the twelfth is National School Nurse Appreciation Day. And that kind of rounds out the year, uh, of, of appreciations, but certainly doesn't round out our, uh, our appreciation for our employees and all the great work that they do. And I really want to thank the school board for being here tonight. I know it's an extra night this month and we really appreciate all your attention and, and, uh, the questions that you have, uh, keeping us on our toes and helping us make good plans for our, for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. So remember, we will be voting on the plan then on next, um, next Thursday, May the thirteenth. And if there is no other business, we are adjourned for this special session.
Hi, everybody. Miss you guys.
Have a good night.